Ready when you are, sir. I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have Pastor Angel Ortiz of Integrity Church for the invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here. I'm, again, Pastor Angel Ortiz with Integrity Church. We're the church on the corner of Pennsylvania and Old 41, where the bells go off every day. That's us there, so please join us as we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all who are here and gathered. Thank you for your many blessings for life and for health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We are so very grateful for liberty, for opportunity, and for justice. Your word says that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order. Therefore, I pray for every level of city official, and in particular, this assembled council. I ask that you graciously grant them a continued wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare for the needs of our people, confidence in what is good and right, the ability to work together in unity, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Bonita Springs. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
All right. Public comment. Anyone from the public? Come forward, right up to the podium.
Hi, I just wanted to speak on the possibilities of objecting to the car wash. Am I on the right agenda? No.
The next item. Thank you so much.
The next one? Okay.
The next item. The next item.
Very next item.
Yeah, we'll call it in one moment. You'll be able to come up then.
There'll be a presentation by the applicant, followed by staff, and then they'll have an opportunity to come and comment.
Any other public comment not on the car wash? All right, seeing none, we will move on to public hearings. We have a...
Mike's gonna go ahead and read the title in because he's trying to get his practice in.
This is a zoning resolution of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, approving a special exception request to allow our car wash facility on property located within the US 41 corridor pursuant to Land Development Code Section 4-888, located on the east side of South Tamiami Trail and south of Bonita Crossings Boulevard. Bonita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I had a bet that Mike was gonna choke on the strap number, and I lost. So with that, this item is quasi-judicial, so I'd ask anyone who's intending to testify or speak on this item, please stand up and raise your right hand. That'd be you two, Ms. ... Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Mary Torenberg, Community Development. I just wanted to give a brief introduction of the case. This is a car wash request within the US 41 overlay. As you know, our US 41 overlay requires a special exception with specific criteria in order for a car wash to be permitted. The applicant is here to make their presentation. Zoning Board recommended approval three to one at their hearing, and the staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. Without further ado, I'll let them go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Patty Kulak for the record on behalf of the applicant. This evening, we will be talking through the request for the special exception within the 41 overlay district for a car wash. With me this evening, I have our applicant, Vince, with Sunshine Clean LLC. We have our engineer, which is Michael Herrera with Blue Shore Engineering. And then available via Zoom, we have our sound consultant, Michael Keane with Keane Acoustics. And our market study that was completed by Russwire. Those two are available via Zoom through our presentation. As mentioned, the request is to allow a car wash facility located within the 41 overlay district through the special exception process. As a property overview, the address of the location is at 228731 South Tamiami Trail. It is outlined in the red on the right side of your screen. The site is approximately 1.24 acres in size. It is within the community commercial zoning district and within that 41 overlay district. And the access for the site is only provided via US 41 access road to the east of the property. For the car wash facility, as you'll see, the site plan is available on the right side of your screen. You will enter off of that access road only. Come in through a double lane payment queue system. You will choose what car wash level tier you would like to purchase. That double lane queue will then combine into a single lane tubed car wash that is fully enclosed. Once you are done with your car wash, you will go over to the nine parking stalls that have provided vacuums and all the necessary requirements to continue cleaning out the car, such as garbage cans. And the hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That is standard for all of Tommy's Express Car washes throughout the country. Looking a little closer at this site plan, these setbacks are all compliant with the code. We have a 15-foot setback that will be maintained along the north and south property boundaries. Both of those do have neighboring commercial. That setback will be, again, maintained and is comparable to those that are existing with the surrounding properties. Then we have a 25-foot setback that is on the east and west property. Both of those do have street frontages, which is where that extended setback comes from. Coming out of our setbacks and looking just at the landscaping, we have our code-compliant landscape buffers. We have a Type A buffer, which is five feet in width, provided for both that north and south property, which is the other commercials. And then we have our Type D buffer, which is along US 41 and is 25 feet in width. All of those will be maintained throughout the operation of the site, but also the construction of the site. And in addition, we also have a wall that was proposed and is requested and shown throughout the plan. That wall is eight feet tall, and that will also have landscaping around it. I'll bring up our civil engineer.
Good evening. Michael Herrera, civil engineer, registered in the state of Florida, Blue Shore Engineering. Just here to talk about utilities and stormwater management. Utilities is gonna be serviced by Bonita Springs Utilities. There are current facilities abutting the US 41 right-of-way, both in terms of sanitary sewer and potable water. So we'll be connecting to those facilities. And then stormwater management, this is part of a master surface water management permit through South Florida Water Management District. This parcel is required to provide the pretreatment water quality before it discharges off-site into the master surface water management system, which is a lake, and then discharges south along Spanish Wells. Well, the stormwater management system does comply, obviously, with all state and local and federal regulations. And I think that's it for engineering.
We have our sound engineer, as I mentioned. He is available on Zoom. Michael, can you hear us? I will take that as a no and run through the sound study that was completed. So as we mentioned, a sound study was completed, and the thought of that... Okay. The thought of that sound study was to speak to the vacuums, because those vacuums are the closest element that is close to the residential neighborhood, which are apartments directly to the east, to the east of the site. When that sound study was completed, it was determined that the sound coming off of US 41 would be louder than those of the vacuums for the site. With that, we also included the addition of the eight-foot wall. That wall does help with that sound annuation, because it is a solid brick wall to, again, help any noise that could come off of the site. We will be maintaining it inside of the site, and there's no impact expected for the neighboring residential or anybody on US 41 should they have their windows down driving along. So speaking to the special exception, that is the reason why we are coming here this evening, is because we are in that 41 overlay district. We are required to have this special exception request. Throughout this, we were able to review the criteria, one of the main ones being consistency with the comprehensive plan. Those uses, the use of a car wash is consistent with the general commercial future land use designation, and there are also other car washes within this overlay district. We did talk about compatibility to the surrounding uses. Again, we have commercial to the north and the south of our property. We do have residential to the east of our property. And then we do not anticipate any impact to public, negative impact to public health, safety, or welfare. As Michael spoke to, we do have the necessary infrastructure in place to support this use, and the design has no negative impacts. During this review process, we did host two neighborhood information meetings. The first one was held October 29th. We had approximately five attendees show up. They were really just interested in what was being shown on the property, as there was a sign already placed on the property that kind of keyed their interest in. We did host a second neighborhood information on June 17th. That one, we had no attendees show up for. We were available, and the link was sent via Zoom. It was advertised, and it was properly noticed. Coming back to that conditional use approval, we did receive the recommendation from staff for approval with a few conditions, all of which the applicant has reviewed and we are in agreement with. We also did have discussions at the zoning board hearing by one of the zoning board members, speaking to the market study and the need for an additional car wash here. The reason for, the difference between our car wash and the car wash to the north, which was the one that was mentioned at the zoning board hearing, that approval was over a year and a half ago. They have a different type of, we'll call it franchisee, because it is not a franchisee. Ours is a franchise, and part of ours has a membership. That membership allows for people to pay a monthly subscription to access the car wash whenever they would like. Part of that is that you have access to the vacuums. And what we spoke to at the zoning board is that the thought of the market study and the reason this location makes sense for our market is because of that apartment complex directly to the east of the property. It's an apartment complex. They don't have garages. They don't have designated parking spots within their parking lots to allow for car clean-out, vacuum facilities, or anything of that sort. And given that our site and the neighboring apartments are within two miles of the beach, we are trying to capture some of those apartment residents within this use of the property to allow them, when they leave the beach, they have friends come over, they can stop by quickly accessing the US 41 access road that they already accessed to get to their property, take a moment, clean out their car, get some of the sand out before going back in. So coming to that life safety element, we are allowing the residents to not be cleaning out their cars in a parking lot in the apartment complex, and instead can utilize our facility to have a safe location where they have designated spots, they have all the necessary apparatus to complete that car wash, and then they can continue back home to their apartment. So with that, I will talk through the conditions of approval. They have not changed since the zoning board hearing. The first one is that the city, that the site plan will be compliant. Absolutely, we will comply with the site plan that has been shown. The site plan has also been consistent throughout all of our neighborhood information meetings. So this site plan has been shown for almost a year now to the public who chose to attend. The second one is that the noise ordinance will be maintained. As I spoke to, we did a full sound study for the site. The noise will not impact the neighboring residential. And additionally, US 41 sound is higher than those of the vacuums. The third condition of approval is that the hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. I will say that those hours of operation do allow for one additional hour in the PM hour than what the franchisee normally accommodates for. We will accept the 9:00 PM, of course, an additional hour that does allow for the applicant and the facility for the car wash to be utilized after hours. Cleaning, maintenance, allowing for just making sure that site is kept very nice for the community. The fourth condition of approval is that the local development order, all of the infrastructure that we spoke to will obviously be compliant and moving through any necessary approvals to maintain that compliance and get that approval. And the fifth one is that the special exception does not guarantee approval. We're aware of that. We understand. We are committed to providing a nice car wash for the residents, for the neighborhood, but also for the city as a whole. And with that, as I mentioned, staff recommended approval. The zoning board did recommend approval. The only member of the zoning board who was the one who did not vote in approval was concerned based off of the market study. Now that we have done the research on the approval from the car wash that he was speaking to at the zoning board, we understand that the market, there's still a need for a car wash for the market that we are talking about for the site that we are speaking to this evening, so we would continue to move forward with that. And the last one is, obviously, we request that the special exception is approved based on the compliance with the criteria and all of the comprehensive plan. I will allow for any questions, but thank you, Board.
Any questions, or do we want to go to public comment?
Public comment.
Public comment. All right. Public comment on this item.
You'll speak into the mic, and you have this timer to speak to.
I've never done this before. Hello, everyone. Is Mike Sheffield here? Hi, thank you so much for inviting me to have this opportunity. I'm originally from Westwood, Massachusetts.
Will you state your name, please?
Julie Basile. I'm originally from the Boston area out in the country. I grew up on a five-acre estate that was Audubon Sanctuary. I moved here to take care of my dad. The background is sort of interesting and part of why I object to this car wash. So I moved here in 2001 to take care of my dad, who had colon cancer. I chose this area to live in. I lived at Sterling Oaks for 10 years until I found black mold in my apartment. So I moved, and I'm renting the past five years. I've lived at the community that's directly behind where the proposed car wash is wanting to be built. And right now, there is a marijuana dispensary that was just built there. I am working with Florida Gulf Coast University students to clean up the entire corridor that we're talking about. It's filthy. There's trash everywhere, and Florida Gulf Coast has agreed to help me clean up the area. With some, some of the residents will be helping with this, too. Other reasons why, there are turtles there. There are alligators, which are obviously a danger, but there's a lot of wildlife there. And the reason I chose to live there is because it's an Audubon Sanctuary certified property. There are three other car washes down the road, not even a mile away. I just totally oppose this, and it will change how I feel about living in Bonita Springs. I love the area. I love the town. I came from a small country town, and I love this area. So I guess that's all I have to say. At 2 minutes and 8 seconds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Seeing none.
Motion to approve with conditions subjected to city community development.
We have a motion. I'll second it for discussion.
There was a comment that this is an Audubon Sanctuary area, but I thought I saw something, Mike, that had been researched, and it's not an Audubon Sanctuary area.
I can't speak on that. I don't know.
I thought I saw some... What, I was reviewing the packet this weekend, and... How did we determine? I'm sure there was a letter saying that it was, although it's our area or that area was under their...
Correct. Audubon International responded and said that location is not within an Audubon.
So it was not...
It's not.
It is not. There is a conservation easement there, which means, you know, there is no development going there, and that does allow for natural habitats to flourish there. But that does not affect this particular parcel or request based on the environmental study provided.
It's not a sanctuary.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just had a question about the eight-foot wall. It's right by a dry retention area, so is that eight foot from the street level? Or is that eight foot from down in the hole?
It's measured from grade, which would be measured from the center of the road.
Okay. And that should adequately block most of the sound from the...
And it's meant to block the headlight glare as well, because there is residential on the other side of that conservation easement.
Any other comments? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
No.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries four to two.
Thank you.
Sorry, five to two. Five to two.
All right, moving on, consent agenda. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Comments on consent?
I do. Mike, did you get my email?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
And everything's good?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Number eight, public hearings. 8A.
This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs extending the electric utility franchise and rate structure for Florida Power and Light Company and providing for an effective date.
Quite simply, this is the, the, the city entered into a 25-year franchise agreement with FPL after the incorporation of the city. This is the 25th year. It is coming to a close. There is a provision in the, in the franchise for a one-year extension. I've contacted FPL. They have no objections to extending it under the current terms, and so that is before you today.
Question of the ballot.
Five years. I apologize, five years.
Yeah, let's push that button.
Are the... All right, Laura.
No, no, no. Jesse was first.
Okay, so as you had them on the phone, did you get an opportunity to discuss the underground that we want to do at the soccer fields on the side of 75 that we've been unable to get a price on for like ever?
No, I haven't.
So while you have them at the table for this, now would be an opportune time to be like, hey, can I get a price on that?
So if I could just clarify, the benefit of this agreement is with the city to be able to collect our franchise fees specifically?
We still have to talk to them, don't we?
We do, and actually, Charlotte Miller is here this evening.
Oh, perfect. Where's Charlotte? I know her. Oh, hey, Charlotte. Okay, good. All right, so let's talk about that. Good. I'm good. I'll hold that, and we will discuss that.
Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, Laura.
Okay, so we're going to be, there's not going to be a raise for one year, correct? Is that how?
No, nothing changes. The current, the current rates in place would continue.
For...
For the five years.
For five more years. Okay.
I'll second.
And so this one-year extension is just a one-year extension before we...
One time, I got confused. One year, five-year.
Five-year extension. But, but after that, we'll have to renegotiate a new thing. It's not like we're done with franchise fee.
We would have to, we would have to negotiate a new franchise agreement to extend for a longer period of time.
And FPL is raising its rates, but not for us?
The rates, the rates are set by tariffs, and that is not part of this agreement. This agreement is a franchise agreement to allow FPL to utilize our right-of-way, our easements to extend power. In exchange for that, they, they pay a percentage of the rates charged within the city to the city.
And we have been in communication with FPNL, and this is a one-time, five-year extension. So about a year away from that date, we will start negotiating and discussing and creating a new proposed franchise-free agreement with our attorney as well as FPNL's attorney.
So we have no say on the amount of money they're going to raise, because they charge Bonita Springs residents $129 after, and for one year per month, and then now they're going to raise their rates four or 5%?
The city of Bonita Springs doesn't have any regulatory authority with respect to the rates that FPNL...
But I'm just saying, so this has nothing to do with that?
No, and, no, and we do not have any authority to address that. No, ma'am.
And is it better to do the five-year extension versus negotiating a new one now?
Yes, because, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I second it.
Yeah. So I motioned, didn't you second it?
All right, any other comments?
Yes, I guess the biggest thing is what I'm pleased is that it protects our right that if we want to revisit the franchise fee to take that to 5% after comparing with other municipalities, that option's protected in there annually, so...
Well, and on that, it was mentioned that we get a percentage back from what they charge, but in fact, they charge an additional 4% that gets billed to everybody, and it says it right on the bill, City of Bonita Springs. So it's not that we're getting anything back from what they're charging. It's...
No, but we have a right to take it up to the max, which is allowed 5%, if we choose to.
But they're only adding it because we asked them to. Okay. Roll call.
So this is a motion to move to second reading in a second. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor, councilmember items. Jamie, you're first up.
Yes. I have an update regarding San Carlos Estates. And there was recently a meeting held between city staff and representatives of San Carlos Estates, including our chairman, Jim Bradford, the district manager, and their legal counsel. And at this time, I'm asking if Chairman Jim Bradford could come forward and speak.
Just at the podium, please. That way, it's on the record.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate your time. I see we have the clock going here, but in our agreement, we could have some extra time if we wanted it.
Yeah, the clock's not going.
Well, thank you. So anyway, I want to thank you all for this evening and allowing me to come here. There seems to have been some clarification issues and maybe some letters that have been written, et cetera. I've made copies of every one of the letters, which I would appreciate if you would let me pass out to the council. Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's got a copy of every letter that's been written to the Florida legislators and to any of the residents in San Carlos Estates. I do want to clarify one thing, Jamie, which I apologize for. The other day, I told you that the Florida legislators only let us talk one minute. They let us talk two. We've, we've been, pardon? We've been, my family has been part of the city of Bonita Springs since they incorporated, became a city. We love being part of the city, and we always have been. All of my brothers and sisters, well, I shouldn't say all of them. I have a sister that doesn't. But we've been part of the San Carlos Estates community since, since the 1980s. My wife and I and our family moved out here 26 years ago. We're a third generation of southwest Florida, which we grew up on Fort Mary's Beach. And we're proud to be part of the city of Bonita Springs. We also love living in San Carlos Estates. We've raised our families here, our children, went to the schools here locally. We love our tranquil community that we have, of which most of our lots out there are acre and a quarter. We like the slower way of life. It's nice that our children can play there, feel safe. We have the ability there to run our golf carts, ride our horses, ride our bicycles. We've got great neighbors. With that being said, it's just a great place to live, and we just don't want to see it change. And if I have an opinion about that, it's because that's the way I feel about our community and our city. And I have, there's nothing I dislike about our city. As far as San Carlos Estates goes, after hurricanes and other catastrophic storms, San Carlos Estates has never needed to ask the city, the county for help. We've cleaned up our neighborhoods, our ditches, et cetera, and taken care of everything on our own and got everything in, back in order within a very short order. I met with council members, Bogaz, city staff members on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. This is the letter that I gave to you earlier today, um, to discuss the working relationship between the city and San Carlos Estates Water Control District. The meeting was productive in regard to the discussion of the city's position and its desire to work with the districts, uh, the district on, on a number of different matters. During the conversation, the city representatives indicated they have been approached by individuals who were concerned that the city was trying to take over the district through the pending legislation that was originally proposed by Representative Butana, that was passed on to another representative and then on to the legislator, to convert the district to a dependent district of the city. There was a concern on the part of the city representatives. The comments made by me in a letter to the local delegation members and the district landowners and Representative Butana's bill and its impact on the district was the cause of perception of some of the individuals that the city was trying to take over the district. That was never my intent. I made it clear to the city representatives that it was not my intention to create a perception that the city was trying to take over, uh, the district and further that the, uh, statements in my, my correspondence were focused on the distinction between the district landowners retaining self-control and independent special water, uh, control district versus the district becoming a dependent, uh, district of the city, in which case the city council will become the ultimate decision-making body for all of the district's decisions. The extent anyone has misunderstood, misconstrued my prior correspondence so that they have come to the conclusion that the city is attempting to take over the district by having the district converted into a dependent district of the city, please understand that has never been my intention in any of my correspondence. I have never indicated, nor do I believe, that the city asked Representative Butana to, to pursue his legislation, and it has always been my understanding from statements made by city representatives that the city was surprised by Representative Butana's proposed legislation, as I was. It has not been my inten- intention to dis- disparage the city. It has always been my intention to make it clear that the question before the landowners is whether the landowners want to continue to control their own destiny by remaining, remaining as an independent special water de- control district, or whether the landowners want to be, become a dependent district of the city, in which case the city council will become the, uh, ultimate decision-makers for the district. As I stated in my correspondence, the board of supervisors of the district are la- are landowners who are elected exclusively by the district landowners to represent the district. Landowners and make decisions that are in the best interest of the district landowners exclusively. In correspondence, the city council members are elected, uh, citywide, and that gives us one representative in our area. The members responsible for making decision based upon what is best for the city as a whole and not just for the district landowners. I strongly believe San Carlos Estates Water Control District should remain as an independent special water control district so that the district landowners are best able to control their destiny and decision-making, an exclusive benefit of the district landowners. I thought the statements I made in my correspondence were clear. However, I understand that in today's environment, misconceptions of statements made by elected officials occur routinely. I do not want to miss, um, perceptions to occur about the city. That was never my intent, and so I am writing this correspondence to make it crystal clear that anyone who takes anything I have said in my prior correspondences to be despairing statements about the city or their intentions to do certain acts is absolutely misconstrued and misinterpretations of my words that is clearly not correct and in, or intended by me instead. I believe the district has a good working relationship with the city, and I believe it is the city's desire to continue to have a good working relationship with the district. If any, if anyone has any questions concerning the position or, or the positions of the district with regard to the rel- its relationship with the city, please feel free to contact me, and I will be glad to clarify the statements I have, I have made in this correspondence. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to stand up here tonight and just let you know that the San Carlos Estates Water Control District, I wrote the letters, not, not the other m- board members, and I take full responsibility for any, uh, thing that's been misconstrued or taken wrongly in those letters, and therefore, uh, I would apologize if that was done, but it was not the intent to be done that way.
Thank you, Jim, for, uh, coming and, you know, straightening that out, um, because I do feel that we've kind of been in the crossfire. But like you said, it wasn't initiated by us at all, and we were, you know, kind of taken back by it, you know, when it came out also. But, uh, yeah, li- like you said, the, the city has, you know, intentions of taking it over. Um, it's totally up to you guys if, if you vote. Um, we do have, uh, uh, properties where we could vote, but we've, uh, as a collective, decided that we're just going to abstain from the vote. That way it doesn't get affected one way or another by us, um, and that way it's, it's up to, you know, solely the people that live out there.
We appreciate that, and we just believe in home rule, and you know, we feel that if the water district is taken over this year, maybe our fire departments will be taken over next year. Personally, I, I love the independent districts, I was a firefighter for thirty-three years, served on Fort Mary's Beach, I retired from there. My brother served at the Benita Springs Fire Department, retired from the Benita Springs Fire Department. And we like the independence of the districts and the different organizations that the governmental, the government has allowed us to create for individual or areas of our community. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Okay, I, um, I appreciate you coming up and speaking tonight. Uh, there was just one thing, I think it's a pretty, um, big issue that was, um, you know, spoke about, there's a lot of posts on social media. I've received phone calls, the city has received phone calls regarding Strike Lane opening to Imperial Parkway, along with other things stated in the letter, and I appreciate you clarifying and stating that, that was not your intent. Um, but I do still feel strongly, um, that we need to provide from the city a letter to the residents in San Carlos Estates. And I would ask that our attorney, city attorney, would draft a letter, um, and I was asking for council support in that. You know, we value our partnership, transparency, and honesty, and it's essential that our communications reflect, reflect those principles. So I think that it's important that we get that out there, um, so.
If I, could I say something?
Sure.
You know, I've, I've lived out here as, I don't know how long you've actually lived out here, but I believe you lived out here when the roads were dirt.
I did.
And, you know, when they, when they initially built Strike Lane, the, not Strike Lane, but when the, we paved the roads, and then they finally came along and built Imperial Parkway. It's not a secret that they put a cutover in Imperial Parkway to the front of the Strike Lane there. So it doesn't take any resident to have to assume, and so for misconceptions to take place that someday that might occur, we just, we don't want it to happen, we hope it doesn't, that it does not happen. And I will tell you this, if you go back to oh-seven and you read some of the minutes or even go to newspaper articles by the Naples Daily News, you'll see that the city of Benita Springs defended not opening Strike Lane. So even when it was a possibility that it could happen, the city stood up. Mayor Nelson said, that's not going to happen, we're not opening Strike Lane, and defended it, and it never, it never did occur. At that point in time, I'll also go on to tell you that it was the water district that wanted it opened. Now personally, I wasn't paying any attention to things back then, so I didn't even know that happened.
When was back then?
Pardon?
When was that?
That was oh-seven, and it was in the Naples Daily News that the article appeared. So the, so with that being said, I just want to let you know that it was the city that defended it. It wasn't the, even the water district that defended it, and I want to thank the city for that action back then. Thank you.
Thank you. Thoughts?
I'm supportive of us doing a letter to this, the citizens, because I mean, we've, we've all kind of gotten a little bit from it, but none of us as much as Jamie has, and it's... But the citizens who aren't part of this district, this is, this is why single-member districts matters, because honestly, to the rest of us, this really, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but this is a non-issue. We don't, you guys don't elect us, we don't have to come back to you, we don't have to deal with you in general. I mean, we, we love all of you, but at the end of the day, she's the only one who has to deal with you. She's catching all the bullets, but at the end of the day, she's the one who keeps bringing it up here and talking to us, and all of the rest of us are like, are we done with this yet? But she still keeps coming back, and she keeps getting attacked, which is crazy, because it's like she's your public defender and you guys are after her half the time. So I appreciate the apology, I think that's good. I think if you can get ahold of whoever's doing the signs, that would probably be helpful. Um, and, uh, you know, hopefully this letter out to the citizens will, will kind of straighten that out. And the Strike Lane thing too, this is kind of, this is one of those situations where we've explained this before. I understand the natural tendency to think that that's inevitable, but just from a procedural standpoint, as far as we go as a city, if, if there was, if anything were to happen with Strike Lane, it would have to come to the city via a, a green sheet, which would mean Jamie would put something together saying she wanted to open up Strike Lane. She's always said she doesn't want to do that. We don't do things in each other's district anyway, and even if this was something that we wanted to, you're talking something so large-scale, it would be part of what we call the, our capital improvement projects, which is, you know, five-year and above or beyond type scale infrastructure, transportation-type projects that take that type of scale and planning. There is nothing like that in our CIP, which is publicly accessible annually when we put out our budget, so. This, this, even if this was something that we wanted to work, you know, behind the scenes for a long time, it would be right there for everybody to see. It's not, and there's no interest from any of us that I've ever seen of wanting to touch Strike Lane.
Well, with all due respect, I did research on not just Benita, Lee County, and the state of Florida, and there's nothing out there.
Right.
Okay? So there's nothing in any of them for that. So with that, I appre- I appreciate what you said, but I would also like to address the signs, seeing as how you brought that up. It's always been our understanding that the city took care of signage, whether it's a garage sale sign or whatever it happens to be. Um, so when the signs got put up the first time and got up the second time, we took no action toward that until we got, um, until recently, okay? And we did ask the signs get taken down, and they did get taken down. And if the signs were to get put back up, they would have to be on private property, not on easement properties. But with, with also that, I, I looked into the, what is construed about political signs, and if it's a political information sign or a campaign sign, et cetera, there are special exceptions to that, even in your sign rules. So from my understanding of reading yours and Lee County's, that anything to do with public si- or signs for campaigns or campaign information or whatever happens, you know, is acceptable, and they don't require permits.
If it's regu- if it's within an election time period, yes, but that's not the point, my point...
Actually, it didn't, this, this actually is an election time period, it wasn't one given by us, it was given by...
I think, I think you're missing the point of the signs are not, where this whole thing is about trying to make it so that we understand, that you understand what we're trying to do and what we're not trying to do. Those signs are directly defiant of that, and so to sit there and defend them, I'm like, so what are we doing?
I wasn't defending them, I was just offending the, of a, a, um, campaign sign. I wasn't defending, I was not defending information on them.
Signs I'm talking about that are putting information out there that seems as if the city's trying to do something, the city's not. Those signs, those are the one, just so we're crystal clear, those signs are not helpful to the perception or the discussion. They're probably, hence the signs, with your apology, there probably wouldn't even be a need for us to do the letter to the people out there. So again, it's, if, if the idea is that you want us to understand that there is no, you agree with us and you believe us and there, we're not up to anything, then if the signs are yours or these are your people, then, you know, in-house, maybe I would take care of that, because it doesn't help.
No, we, we had nothing to do with the signs being put up, we had no, the water district had nothing to do with that. The, the signs were put up by independent landowners out there, and I got ahold of them and requested that they get taken down. They were taken down the next day, uh, and...
That's helpful.
That's, I mean, I stepped up, I did that for, for, anyway, um, I got that done.
Thank you.
Okay? So.
Nigel, you're up.
Yeah.
If, if you guys do, do decide to write a letter, can I have a opportunity to look at that?
A letter for...
You'll receive it.
It's going to get mailed out, well, I know I will.
Oh, the letter that's going to go out to the, to the district?
Pardon?
That, that we're going to send to the district?
Sure.
You're in the district, right?
Yeah, you'll receive it.
Okay, I was wanting to know as the chairman of the board whether I could have an opportunity to just see it before it got mailed, that was all.
Point of clarification, did you get an opportunity to see the letters before they went?
I did not.
Fair enough.
Nigel?
So here's my comments, um, I appreciate you coming in this evening and, and being respectful. I attended that last meeting and, uh, only went there because I'd heard all these stories. To say that Jamie was treated with disrespect would be an understatement. Um, she handled herself very, very well, but the tone of the letter, we've been painted to be the enemy. And when somebody says, well, the independent homeowners put up these signs, the signs are all the same, so somebody coordinated that. That, I, I don't think somebody went out and said, let's all design signs and go out. Somebody got that little campaign going, created the same signs, don't know who that was, that person's never been identified. But, um, I resent the way that, uh, Jamie was treated, painted as the enemy, even in the letter that was written. It looks like the city, um, that we're doing something wrong in Benita Springs, that we're not elected at large. Respectfully, if you all feel that our city government is not the way it should be intended, then, yeah, maybe we should discuss that, but, uh, she is the elected representative in your committee, I think from what I've heard, she does a heck of a job. And again, the gentleman that was the most disrespectful is not here this evening, but I'd love to take him to task on that. Again, I think the letter from us is more than appropriate because you come here this evening, how many of your constituents are here this evening? From your, from your community? None, so it's easy to go back and apologize and say, you know, I misspoke, I wrote a bad letter, but still the majority or all of your citizens out there still think the city's the enemy, so the letter needs to go out, and that's my opinion.
Laura?
I'm sorry, I'm completely lost. I thought we were just saying we want nothing to do with your water manage, you know, we don't want anything to do with sewer water management in your estate. But now there's a letter, what letter? You, yeah.
So the letter, okay, the letter is...
I didn't get a letter.
It's a letter would be a...
I just got one today, no, I just got this today.
Right, so the letter we're discussing is a response from the city about those, essentially. So like it's a response to those, to clarify.
But, but we're going to say we're never going to go through Strike Lane to Livingston? I don't know, that might make a really good ingress egress. Change is hard to handle, I, I haven't been there. I know where Strike Lane is, and I know where Livingston is, and if I lived on Strike Lane, I might want to get to Livingston quicker.
We're not commenting on the future. We're commenting on what our intentions have been in the past and where you are, where we are right now, it's not in our CIP.
Well, I, I guess I want to see the, but what's the letter going to say? We'll never, ever go through Strike Lane to Livingston? Or this year, we won't go... Or this year, we won't go through Strike Lane to Livingston?
Laura, it's not gonna say any of that. It's stating that a letter was sent out to every resident in San Carlos Estates. I have received phone calls. The city's received phone calls, social media posts. All in belief, they took, they perceived this letter of things that the city could do if this bill passes.
And this was sent by whom?
The chair, Jim Bradford.
Okay.
Okay. So this letter, many pages long, about what the city, what we could do, one of them opening Strike Lane. This bill is, does not pertain at all to any of that. I mean, to be honest, if we sat up here right now, we don't need this bill to go through to say, "We want Strike Lane open." But this has never been, ever been part of anything council spoke about as, since two thousand and seven, as he stated. And I, as long as I feel that the residents deserve to hear from the city, from council, clarifying what was written in this letter that made people perceive us. You've heard residents come up and speak to us. You were present in that meeting. You were also present in our meeting that we had two weeks ago, when we voted to not be part of voting for the landowners' vote on August twenty-third.
Right. See, I didn't know Strike Lane was involved in it. So I, like I said, I'm confused. I'm not opposed to any of this. I'm just confused where Strike Lane came in to the, the dis- the issue that we were discussing, two, two weeks ago, yes. It was actually, there was a, somebody who said, "We never should have paved the roads." Okay, yeah, I remember that meeting.
There's been a couple of meetings that we've had residents come up and speak very loudly about Strike Lane being opened, very loudly, and very disrespectful. So no, it, it's been an issue.
Not here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
But the, the, the problem is that they, they perceive that this is just a, a way for us to take over the road and open it up.
And I appreciate-
And, and, and it's not.
Yes, it's not, and it's-
It's taking the conspiracy theories.
Correct. That's all it is.
This was all a city initiative.
It's like, so there's a letter that goes out that we could do all these things, and then all these people have been thinking we're gonna, in the back of their mind, that we're gonna try to do it, and now they're like, "Ah, see?" So now we can just be like, "Hey, look, fake news. We don't want it."
Jamie, you also said that you heard from people that wanted, now, I, I don't want Benita Springs to have anything to do with this, but you also said you heard from constituents that wanted it. That they wanted Benita Springs to come in and take over their water manage-
But that's going to be in a vote. I'm speaking of a letter that was sent out to the residents that made the city be perceived a certain way. That is what many people have-
On city letterhead?
Yes. We're reassuring the people we're-
City letterhead?
No, no.
Their letter was on their letterhead from the water district.
Okay, so that's a perception of whomever, you know?
That was read. And like I said, I've received many phone calls in regards to it, social media posts. The city's received phone calls into what this meant and the whys. And I feel like it's important that we stay transparent with our residents, and that they know where we stand. And I'm not stating we're putting on there that we're never gonna open Strike Lane, or that we aren't. I never said that at all.
No. I think we should have given out Jim's phone number instead of Jamie's.
And that has done. Jim's phone number is posted on the website, and people have contacted Jim too. I am one hundred percent sure of that. Correct?
You're correct. I haven't had the phone calls you've had, but I've had phone calls. So apparently, you know, you know, you, you live in a community, and, and with all due respect, there's two sides to everything.
With all due respect. Back at you.
You, you're gonna have people in every community that some want this, and some want that. And I'm re- I, I feel very confident that the ones that disagree with me call Jamie, and the ones that disagree with her, call me. So that's, that's probably, I mean, when you're doing politics, or whatever you want to call it, that's the way it works. And so-
But we're trying to do community, I think.
I know that. And, and somehow, we always get together, you know, when there's elections, there's two sides to everything. When you run for office, there's two sides to that. And, and it doesn't make them your enemies. It just means that they're not picking you at the moment, or, or they are picking you, okay? And so just, we'll get through all of this one day, and, and hopefully that we'll all come out better people from it, and that we'll all, this will all get washed over in a few months, when, when the elections are, when the election for the-
But somehow, I think you guys are on the same side.
We are.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I, I don't-
That's what confuses me.
I don't agree with the letter that was sent out, and I did not receive the letter before, before it was sent out. I was as surprised as every other landowner that lives out there that received the letter, and so-
Oh, so you were, mhm.
And when people read that, this was-
So it's just correcting the record?
Correct. That's all I'm asking for.
I send out an annual letter. It wasn't a spec-
Okay, we're gonna stop, and Jamie, thank you very much.
Laura, Derek, you had a comment?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm good.
Do you guys have a direction? Are we good? We don't need to vote on that? We're good to do the letter?
If you want to vote on it, that'd be fine, if you're just to show unity in the board.
You're asking, you're directing the city attorney to draft the letter.
Do we need to?
For the mayor's signature.
Yeah.
That's what you're gonna do.
We don't, we don't need to, but I think we should.
Okay. You wanna make a motion, Jamie?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Absolutely.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to nine B. Jim?
Yes, this is, this is one of those technically two district green sheets here that falls down the split between Jesse's district and my district on Kent Road, off of, off of Terry, on the east Terry. As the liaison to the YMCA, I was approached by their executive operations head, Chris Sap, about the complaints and conditions on Kent Road. Kent Road is a key service area to the YMCA, the soccer fields of the city, Nature Place, Callum's Creek, as well as access to the Pine Lake Preserve. There is a lot of, when I ask questions about this, there's a lot of question about title, who owns it, that type of stuff. And I think it's something that, it's been ignored for a while, that I'd asked Jesse's support and the rest of council to move forward with one identifying that history as to who controls what, and see if we can find a clean, a way to work to get that repaved, because it is a gateway to Nature Place and, and the YMCA, and a lot of new residents that are coming to the community.
Motion to approve?
Well, there's nothing really to approve.
Other than a direction, more or less, I'd request a direction to staff to, to research the ownership, what steps we can take to go ahead and do the repavement of Kent Road.
Are we gonna get accused of trying to open it up to Benita Beach Road?
God only knows.
But we already know that the, the city owns most of it, so let's just go ahead and-
That's, that's, that's a debated point.
Okay, so the only issue with that, and I'm, I'm fully supportive. I appreciate you doing it. It's something that should have been addressed, probably. Here's, I mean, the only, the, the, when we dig into, on the ownership, the, the deals, we don't own Kent Road, private road. That's a problem. But that said, we have significant resources on Kent Road, so there could be an argument to be made there.
Right.
So for Colomms Trail, Nature Place, the YMCA, and the associated soccer fields that are used by more than the YMCA, I believe there could be an argument to be made. However, it, the, unfortunately, I think the reason it has been left that way for so long is this Kent, Kent Road, as we dig back, we're, we're probably, and I'm not a hundred percent, we're probably gonna find out it's private, I think.
Well, I think, bottom line, let's get it documented.
I agree. I agree.
Let's get it researched, and then so we can make a, an intelligent decision, one way or the other.
Even if it is, I think there's still a reason-
Oh, I say, yeah, let's get it done. It needs to be. But, okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll look into it. I mean, I think there's a valid reason for, to go forward with it, but, you know.
It's not currently a city-maintained roadway. I think the next steps would be to, to do a chain of title, to understand what rights are out there, what rights the city may have, and, and to do some survey work to understand what's there, and then we can come back to you with, with that information. And it's not so simple as repaving. I, I did take a look at it with an asphalt contractor, and so it, it's, it would be a little more extensive work, but you'd end up with a-
Doesn't have the base under it or anything.
Correct. That, that's really what the problem is, so. But there's a solution, and, you know, it first starts though with doing this kind of title work to understand what, what we could do.
Derek, you had a comment, or are you just hitting the button for no?
Uh, no, I haven't been able to turn it off. Oh, there, sorry. I was trying to turn it off from the last time. No, I, I would, I would request a vote though, because depending on what kind of work needs to be done, it could exceed the manager's spending authority.
So is there a motion to move forward on this?
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, Derek, we're at you again.
I got nothing this time. You want me to press the button just for?
All right, Arlene?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like us to move forward with the update on the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six draft budget. Okay. Good evening. We're gonna be very brief today. Wanted to review for everyone our budget calendar into the future. We're here tonight for a budget update on additional information. As you'll recall, each fiscal year, we have to start, we start our budget process. We actually start with capital improvement workshops earlier in the year, but we start our budget hearing in June, June or July, and then we continue through our process as outlined in Florida statutes until September, when we finally adopt. So each week, we like to bring you any updated information that we have, and open it up to discussions that council may have. Tonight, we're having, as I mentioned, budget update discussions. The next regular city council meeting, Wednesday, August twentieth, at nine AM. Again, we'll present to you any additional information we have, and open it up to discussions. And then Wednesday, September third, at five thirty PM, we'll have our tentative budget hearing, including a millage rate vote. And then Wednesday, September seventeenth, at five thirty, we'll have our final budget hearing with the millage rate vote. On both of our September hearings, we usually have two meetings per month, one at nine AM and one at five thirty. Because of Florida statutes, we'll need to hold both of our September meetings at five thirty, as opposed to in the morning at nine AM. Let me see how we get this going. Okay. We do want to review, as we do each time, our strategic priorities that the city council has recently updated. These are our priorities that are based in, that our whole budget is based upon. They're listed here. And again, they were just updated in March. State revenue projections. The state is on a different fiscal year than the city. So to date, we have received state revenue projections for half-cent sales tax and municipal, municipal revenue sharing. And we're very pleased to say that they are in line with what we have in our budget draft. As you all know, we bring you, the state does revenue estimating conferences several times a year on our major revenue sources. We, we track that information. We incorporate it into the trends that we have, and we use our historic trends to project revenue. So we're very pleased that there were no, no surprises there. We are still waiting, the second bullet there, we're still waiting to, for the state to release its projections for communication services tax and local option fuel tax, and hopefully they'll be here at our next meeting. We do like to share each time, this is our real estate tax projection. This is based upon the tentative, excuse me, the mill rate vote that we took last month, and that would be in your trim notice. When it comes out, it will come out in August. And we like to show you just some examples of the impact of the tax rate that is proposed currently. And that is based upon a Save Our Homes qualified resident. And that's it. Really brief tonight. I know we've been together. We want to open up for discussions and take any questions, or any comments anybody has.
Jim?
Yes, I wondered if I could go ahead, and we've, we've talked about where our fees stand to a lot of our peers and so forth. I wonder if we're all, and I know that John and his team are working on putting something together from our impact fees and that end of the house. I'm wondering if we could do a formal comparative survey of what our surrounding communities are for the fees under our control, such as the communications tax, the franchise tax, and, I mean, fees and so forth, and just so we have a better understanding as to where our comparable communities are around us.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, great. And we'll have another update at the following council meeting as well. So if there's any additional information in between, please reach out to us-
Yes.
-to be able to provide, as well as we continue towards that vote countdown in September. Yes, if anything y'all need, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other updates I quickly wanted to provide was that our neighborhood services department did complete the opt-in for FROC, so we are in the system completely for this upcoming year. Fingers crossed we don't gain those extra points from recovery in the future. Also, I did want to thank everyone for their, and Doc, and our special legal counsel, David Theriak. Dr. Margaret Banyan is here in the audience as we conducted our land use workshop today. From the breakout of some of those more discussion items, we'll be coming back to you with coun- to council meetings to, for more of a deep dive in certain areas that was asked and brought back for, but for the council. And then a reminder also that Thursday evening from five PM to seven PM at our recreation center will be the Parks Master Plan Public Workshop.
That's this Thursday tomorrow.
That's this Thursday tomorrow, five PM to seven PM. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mayor and council member reports. Start with Jim. Anything?
I have no items to report.
All right, Nigel?
Well, so there's no TDC meeting in July, so nothing to report there. Next, the next meeting will be next week. I need council's artistic input, so as you, I know Jesse's gonna get scared. Thank you. As you probably know, I brought up the fact that the literacy council building was a perfect palette. It's outside the corridor. It's north of West Terry Street. Had a chance to speak with the new executive director, and really, the, they're open to wherever we want to put the mural, but I'd love to be able to get input from council for the, for the Art and Public Places Board. Do you think the north side or the south side? Initially, I thought north side for sure, but in driving by it and doing inspection the other day for murals, it's interesting. So I'd love you to give input to Nicole on whether you think a mural would be appropriate on the north side of the building or the south side.
And is that through the TDC program?
No, no, the TDC program, that's completely different. That's the backside of the, of the banjo.
I would love to hear Nicole's professional mural opinion.
But traffic would see it easier for on the north side, right?
Yes.
That's why I'm asking you all to take a look. This was not staged, Nicole, so.
I'm wondering about this.
You know that.
So Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, not an artist, but I am the staff liaison to the Art and Public Places Board. We have had these discussions in our Art and Public Places Board, and just like Nigel, our initial thought was the north side. But in further discussions, now it's kind of up in the air, so.
What are the pros and the cons of, are you just thinking, like, from, from a driving standpoint, more people are gonna be able to see it, one or the other, or just how it lays in the building? What are, what's the?
Well, it, it's funny, you say that if you're headed south and you're looking at an ice hole, obviously, it's gonna be the north side of the building would be the east to see, but there are some obstructions. And if you're traveling north, when you look over and you see it, the, the south side of the building is also unblocked. So again, it's one of those, I'd love your, love what your opinions are. There's no, there's no discord on the Art and Public Places Board. It's just, we have an opportunity. We've got a willing participant, and they're both good palettes, so. Kind of fun for you to get involved and be able to say that you have some artistic input.
If there were, I wish we had an intern who could just kind of stick these on, and we could look at it comparatively. But I mean, my, I would say north, I guess, just thinking about it, but I don't know, now that I drive by, maybe I'm-
Next door to drive by and let Nicole know. Next air to drive by and let Nicole know. And the final thing I have, uh, this is something that I brought up months ago, and I'd really like to focus on it and ask staff to drill down, uh, standardizing the expectations and responsibilities of our different board and committee members. And, uh, you know, we still have issues with people that, uh, either don't attend meetings or boards that have meetings no times a year. And I know we've tried to, uh, we've looked at, um, combining or eliminating some, but just, it would help staff, it would help everybody, I think, if, um, board members and committee members knew what we expected of them to be a member of one of our committees or boards. So being on a board and then missing a half or two-thirds of the meetings, it's ridiculous.
Friendly amendment, I would just think about, think about doing that after the culling. Because there's no point in telling everybody what their, what their expectations and their point is, and then we're gonna get rid of four of the, you know, get rid of four of the boards or whatever the deal is. I mean, so it might be less impact and just as efficient if we do the culling and then do the boards.
And I think maybe if everybody in council knew what the current expectations were, because many of our boards now only meet once every other month. Some meet three, four times a year.
So the combining of the boards, that may not affect some of the boards, that, it wouldn't affect all of the boards. I think the combining was a discussion for those that have land use ties to them. You do have other boards that do not have, that would not be part of a merge. But yes, there, there is an administrative code. Uh, and then there's also, in each of the individual boards makeup, there is some legislation that sometimes discuss expectations in those two.
Perhaps, would it be helpful if the, if the staff was to provide a memo on the status of all the boards, what boards we have, how often they meet, and what some of the requirements would be?
Thank you, Mr. Rooney.
Great idea.
Did you enjoy that?
He did.
Chris?
Uh, wanna thank Derek for working on the, uh, resolution to, uh, for, you know, that will be, hopefully be considered at the next council meeting on the, uh, complying with the state law on the lookback period. It's gonna solve some problems for real estate transactions here in the city as, uh, buyers, uh, want to know that the lookback period is not gonna be applied. And of course, we can't do it, but there's FEMA considerations to the flood insurance discount program that are still being worked out between the state and FEMA. So looking forward to that resolution. Uh, I think since the last meeting, I, I did have a chance to meet with Representative Botana and Speaker Del, Delzinate Sam Garrison out of, uh, uh, the Northeast Florida Jacksonville area. And, uh, Sam, uh, is a very, much of a proponent for, uh, rails to trails projects. Uh, he was instrumental in getting the, uh, rail to trail project that starts out in Jacksonville and goes south into, into his district and all the way through it. So he has pledged to, uh, help, uh, find some money with the Florida Forever Program. And, uh, looking forward to, to speaking with him more on that and, uh, finalizing our final offer to, uh, uh, the, uh, Submental Gulf Railroad.
I just wanted to remind Councilmember Corey of the, um, appraisal process that's moving forward. If you wanted to touch that, each of the jurisdictions are going to, it's within the manager's signing authority, but each of the jurisdictions are gonna participate in that.
Uh, as you know, we can't acquire the land for, uh, more than the appraised value. Uh, we're going to go ahead and get the, that, an updated appraisal of what things are worth. So we at least know the upper end of whatever, uh, final offer is going to be made. So that's gonna take place, it'd probably take about two months to get that appraisal done. So, uh, that's, uh, being coordinated by Doug Haddaway and, uh, the, and the Trust for Public Land. So we should have that, uh, I would say by the middle of October at this point.
And it's being funded by Collier County Benita Springs in Estero.
Right.
Well, it should be cheaper now because it's, you know, not been kept up, it's just way over.
Don't jinx it, Mike.
Yeah, right.
Well, even if they cleaned it up, it would look. Uh, I, I just wanna say thank you to Public Works for, uh, getting old forty-one, uh, Benita Beach Road. Yeah, you couldn't see the stripes on the road at all anymore, and, you know, cars were just kinda going wherever they wanted to. And, uh, that section was repaved and restripped within the last week, so looks much better now. Thank you. Laura?
Um. Uh, BSU update, uh, Andy Kobel, the new CEO. He just got a special award from the Florida Royal Water Association. And it basically just means that he does extra and above service. So when other counties are in trouble, he goes there. And so it was a really big deal, and he was asked to go up, and it was a big surprise. Cause he's like, I'm not on the agenda, why do I really need to be there? No, you do, come on. And he didn't, and it was exciting. And the other part is on October first, BSU has decided that it's no longer going to be absorbing the, the fees from when you charge your bill online or your debit. All those fees are coming back to, to the residents. So they're no longer going to be, and you all get a letter and explain it. But on October first, that three percent fee that is charged is coming back, so. So good news, bad news?
Jesse?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, uh, we approved, um, for Fiesta Benita, the twenty thousand on the sixteenth. Uh, that said, for the sake of expediency, um, we're gonna, I'm asking you to let me authorize staff to enter a contract with Zap Company and pay them the twenty thousand to use towards the event, and then they can do all the required vendor paperwork. Um, and then paying the vendors directly, and then they just need to provide receipts so that we aren't doing agreements with ten different vendors and trying to get them to do all thirty pages of our city paperwork. We can do it with the company, and then the company can deal with it. So it'll move things faster, and we can document it to ensure that everything is what it should be. But it's just, it's a more expedient process to keep everything going as it should, so. Um, yeah, I don't think, I, I don't know if we need a motion or anything, but.
But is that okay with, like, city and?
Yeah, I had Derek put it together, yeah.
So the, 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 the issue is, uh, following up on the, the procurement, trying to secure the, secure individu, each individual vendor filling out all the paperwork for individually to respond back for purposes of expediency, given the Fiesta Benita timeline. The, the main, the, the actual winner of the R, of the RFP will complete all the paperwork. The payment will be made to them, and then they'll have to re, they'll have to show that, uh, receipts for everything were paid, that all, all the funds are accountable at the conclusion.
Similar to like hiring a general contractor, and then they deal with it. Exactly.
And, and in this case, what, what we've done is we've sort of, in the past, we've hired all the subcontractors. We selected the contractor, then we've done all the hiring of the subcontractors, so we're just sort of flipping that.
So this is good with special events, and they're, okay?
Yes, I'll work with Laura on this.
It'll, it makes it quicker, and it's less work from our standpoint to try to sub, get all of these various, you know, little tiny subs and just let them do it, essentially.
So if you wanted to make a motion to direct staff to enter an agreement with the winner of the, the bid agreement to one contract?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Pardon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Okay, so this is okay with legal and with special events? Special events is hiding back there. You're noncommittal?
You're hiding, or yes, you're not, and you're okay with it?
Cause I, I sort of see it as, you know, lessening your power and your, cause you guys do the whole thing.
Uh, for correction, not, not for this event.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is.
He approves an RFP for an outside entity to, to actually do the.
As long as Laura's okay, I'm okay. But go ahead.
Is that a yes cut? Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I don't have anything.
All right. Okay, moving on to public comment. Anybody in the public? Ron, you're the only one here, I think, so. All right.
Yeah, who's left already?